And I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the.
I. And to the Republicans from which stands. One nation. Indesitable with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm roll call.
Mockler.
Graylow.
You're.
Smith.
Here.
Daisy.
You're.
Hammond.
Here.
Right. Any conflict of interest declarations? During that. Approval of the agenda.
Most to approve, do we have?
With the addition of ditch board.
Ditch board. Financial.
CDs.
Yeah, okay.
CDs. Yep, and then if we can add, under executive session contracts.
Okay. So with those two amendments.
I'll second it.
And there's a motion in the second. John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I had motion carries approval of minutes.
I'm sure approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. It would appear that there are.
No, I, I may, maybe should let you all know that I, in a week moment, I agreed to do an ask that your commissioner. Ollie class, it'll be a week from yesterday. And if others wanted to show up and with, I, I could make some matching bullseye t-shirts. But we would have to have Kerry more than, two more would show, we would, you'd have Kerry announce that or post it.
I can do that.
I'll probably have to ask you, you'll, you'll, you have that PowerPoint from a couple of years ago, maybe I could build upon.
I'd have to update it, but I can sure do that.
Super, that would be great if you could do that.
Yeah, I will do that.
It's next Monday at noon.
Okay.
So no, I think it's the right thing to do. I think that we, it's good for us to give a update from time to time. That's a good venue to do it. It'll be at the library, so. Yep, those are great.
Right.
Who goes to those classes? I mean, is it just open to public?
Yeah, this is open to the public and it's sponsored by Ollie. I think you know what Ollie is. It's a set of classes that we have, I think this semester, we have twenty-one classes in Bemidji. And and it ranges from anything from Tim Shoren does something on, on international relations government to knitting. So, so real broad range of subjects.
Can't be all work.
No, and that, this could be a good, I think this can be a good, at least an opportunity for folks to give us some feedback. You know, and I'm willing to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
For doing that.
Yeah, the ones at the library are all free because everything at the library has to be free, but if they're at the movie theater or something, I think you have to be a member.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but they're. Yeah, I, I sometimes go to the ones at the library and they're always good. Alright. There are no other visitors to be heard. Scott, you're, you're on commission table.
Alright, so. We'll pack it. Spend printout to freshen our memory of what we're talking about, then a couple photographs from JMJ casework. Things to. See the work, what type of work to do. And see on the floor, Lowell came by this morning and laid it out, what it looks, looked like. So this is obviously being the front of the commissioners table, it would all be skirted and would be skirted solid. And put up in there where we'd be running wiring, there's technology and stuff. That's a problem, obviously, this. And I'll go back that way further because little smaller than what you spread out now, we're figuring three feet off that wall is in the back here is going to come a box about four feet off that column.
And. Yeah, the TV would be where.
Well, that's what we didn't kind of work out because.
Have to be.
I know originally, you know. Uh, this is Mr. Howes, a condition of what he thought. Um, this over here, the six, eight, ten staff on this eight foot over here. I know Kerry's said something about getting these monitors up here. So I don't know if we need to move them over this way or how to go with this eight foot over here and keep, I don't know, keep that there. And whereas we do that, I still have all this running across the floor and stuff. I know there's some talk about getting, was it bolt monitor or this wall as well?
You know, I think it depended on how far that water closet room came for the sprinkler system. Um, we did a.
This is laying Kerry and I talked about putting both of those on the wall, uh, just to, so that you could have one for Zoom and then one for other presentations. We may end up being the way that's laid out. We may have to move those a little bit so it's easier for like the Kerry, Dick, Dave, kind of a corner to see. But you definitely get them off the floor and out of the way.
Yeah, if, if we had two, I wonder if we could put a monitor on, uh, on the front side of the pillar there and then have another one that would be for the audience.
Thought, thought about that too. Oh, one on the back wall and then one for you guys, but that's entirely up to you.
Yeah, I think, I think that may be a good, good plan.
I say back while I talk about the west wall.
Correct.
And commissioners.
Yeah, behind the, behind the commission for the audience to see and then another one in place for them to see.
Yeah.
Scott and I talked with the architects a lot about where, where that room goes, how big that was going to be and how they were going to situate that because we were talking about like the projector and the, um, the whiteboard stuff up there and we kind of decided to do a closet with like double doors so that we could maximize our space actually in the room. Instead of going with something that had a door on the end and had to be wider. So. I don't know exactly how that's all going to play out.
I think it got shrunk down. It's gonna be about two by eight, I think.
Yeah, so it might.
Be a little bit longer because I know, I know the screen needs to come down to make room for the riser room.
So. We'll figure it out anyway. I like the idea of putting a screen up there on the post.
You talk like this?
Yeah.
Or that one, this one?
Yeah, just kind of hanging one up there.
Kind of.
That would be a little bit mean.
Well, you just mount it right centered on the face of the.
And this one would be more for us.
Yeah, this one's for us. It would go.
So it would be on here, right there.
Yeah.
Now it can be, it can have a.
We put it on a swivel arm.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Those are, that's pretty easy mount type. Yeah, I mounted one myself at home. Well, two, one for my, my office and one for my, you know.
This wraps around a little tighter than it is in the drawing here. Like it looks like, you know, this last one here isn't like ninety degrees from.
Looks like an extra section there compared to this drawing.
Oh, this is, so this is that.
Yeah.
And then that's just sort of is an end cap for it. Alright, that makes more sense. Yep, I didn't count through those. Yep, alright.
How tall, how tall are these?
Gotcha.
Jobbies. Travis thought it was maybe thirty inches, but I.
I'd guess that's what it is.
Yeah, standard table height's kind of about twenty-nine.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and this proposed one's thirty, isn't that what you read?
Yes, it's thirty is the proposed heights. Now Travis brought up something that would be important to he and I because we're likely to push stuff off the top. We'd have a, a lip up here so to keep us from.
Just a little.
Yeah, doesn't, it only gotta be an inch, inch high.
Like a pencil.
Yeah, something. And as I'm always stirring papers, you know, and I hate to get on my hands and knees and crawl out. Pick up stuff.
Oh, you want to veil there. You won't be able to, now you have to walk all the way around.
That's right, yeah.
Hey, we lift up, we'll have a place to put our little name tags up there, make sure it's white enough.
Well, it'll be wide enough for that. I don't know what we're going to do there.
Well, we can always get something that we can.
Mount to the.
Mount on the front.
Yeah.
Velcro or something with the name plate.
Yeah.
If you went tall enough, it would cover a little, uh, uh, cords and stuff a little bit too as we end up.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe they can come up with some way to.
Insert just the. Just the nameplate piece of an insert or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. And ours would be more like the angled, angled picture.
Yeah, that's just some pictures I grabbed off their, their website this morning.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, they do some nice work, obviously.
Yeah.
How much was this gonna be?
Uh, I believe eight.
Eight?
And we're figuring maybe an extra two thousand for the electrical. I don't think it'd get to be that much, but. It's nice. And the other person, other outfit, I got a price on this twenty-four thousand. And I finally heard from the third one who said, nah, we can't handle you this year. Well, I reached out to them last September, October and they're so I just kind of threw my arms up at that outfit, so.
Sounds like you've got a plan.
Yeah, this sort of woodwork I think is purely adequate for this room.
Yeah, I guess, like Lowell said, there's hundreds of.
Yeah.
Hundreds of choices.
Yeah, go with something roughly becoming of the podium if we're going to keep adding here.
Yeah, so.
Only wooden room, I think, so.
It'll be a wood top then, right? Also.
Oh, it'd be, you can, I would imagine the choice, you know, imagine it'd be laminate, probably.
The whole thing's laminate, isn't it?
Yeah, I think even that's wood looking stuff in that one photograph is wood grain looking laminate, which it's hard to tell the real from the fake anymore.
Till you lift it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be pretty heavy, so it's going to be pretty sturdy.
And yeah, and Lowell's taking the time to kind of research it out and, man, man, he even came measured her room to make sure and looked at all the entrances. Are we going to get it in here?
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll be able to get it in here and assemble it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So it's now. Do you need a vote?
I just need the green light from you guys if you want time to think about it or whatever. Uh, like I said, that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, reached out to three contractors and got a response from two, so.
And, and so we've got an eight thousand dollar.
Ten. Ten with electrical.
Lowell needs.
Yeah.
So those are two separate contracts.
Right.
So you would need authority to.
Yeah, I got, I'll have to reach out to electrician, which I tried to do last week and he wasn't available, but I'll try again. I'll get a number from Todd's and maybe from Thompson's also. And you can just go whoever's low on that end. So.
So you need authority to go forward with two contracts. Though actually, I guess we.
It's a project, you can do it all at once.
Project, do it all at once, so up to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Is there a motion?
She'll moved.
Second.
So motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and thank you.
You bet.
It looks like a, a reason, you know, a reasonable project.
And I know it'll last forever, so.
Yeah.
So I have one other thing not related to that, just an update on it, the MEP, the Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Project. We had pre-bid walkthrough last Friday. We had one contractor come for that. A local contractor, Walker Construction, Marty Gillerson was representative for that. So that's kind of where we're at. So.
And that was on the, or what was that for?
That's for the HVAC upgrade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only one?
Only one.
Everybody's so busy.
Well, I've kind of, I've thought all along and I even mentioned a couple of times, you know, you sure we really want to start that this spring, you know, getting able to pull that off? Oh, yeah, yeah, I think so, I think so. But it's just, like you said, everybody's got their projects lined up for this spring, but I understand also, wait another year, the inflation rate's just going to kill us, so. Not sure where we're really at. But.
I just have to see what, see what we get and.
We don't have to take it.
Exactly.
You know, and Marty even said, you know, he's kind of been doing some pre-work, reaching out to his subs. You know, his good subs that he counts on. He's like, I can't get them. They're already, look, you know, got work arranged and booked the year out. So then there was talk about, well, what if we have, you know, we might have to do an extension. You know, to, what is it, seventy-five percent completion and then end date might have to be pushed out. You know, maybe we need to phase it in. We talked about that in the beginning and kind of thought, well, let's just, just do the whole thing all at once. One big mess be done, maybe it'll have to be phased in where the boilers put in at this time and then several months down the road, whatever that might be, then attack the fan coil units. Maybe that's phase two, maybe phase three is the ventilation or maybe the ventilation and the fan coil units are phase two. So there's talk about different scenarios. On how it might all play out. But that's where we're at right now. We have one contractor that looked at it. So.
I think that's the, the state in the whole US right now.
Yeah.
Just an awful lot of COVID money out there and, oh, they're super busy.
Yeah. I, and I found in the past, I've always had trouble. Of course, projects not being very big where I worked before to get contractors out of Sioux Falls to look at it because, you know, they don't have to travel sixty miles to make money. So this, I thought was a fairly nice project, but like you said, everybody's super busy, so. So I just, that's where we're at. I'll keep you posted and we'll go from there. Let's see, have any other questions about it? I'll try to answer them.
None there, on the, the third floor, uh, work, uh, gonna have the smaller committee work on those bids.
Right.
And, uh, and you'd mentioned you'd like me to participate in some of that, and if you do, I can, you know, I mean, just let me know what you want.
I, I reached out to a contact I have in Sioux Falls. He's a project manager for a construction company up there and I talked when I had my room full of experts that's Friday, when we're done, I said, we're not leaving yet. I got questions. So I asked them a question about what would be our best approach into this whole thing? Obviously, we don't want to be spending a bunch of money that's not, you know, that's construction money that you know, we want to be kind of careful there. So that's why I reached out about the best way to let this out for bids or whatever. Um, there was talk about, well, you know, construction manager and then the group here last Friday. So now I don't think you want to go that route, which obviously you, you do request for proposal for a construction manager, then you interview these construction managers and you handpick one you want. Well, they're coming with a construction company attached to their hip.
Yeah.
So, and I'm assuming the cost of the project requires us to put it out for bids. So I think our best proposal, but my thought is, we, we still do an RFB request for bid for a general contractor. We just write that scope of work up as air tight as we can get it. So we got a good descriptive of what's going on. Because, you know, there's going to be, I think, variables in this whole thing just because of the age of the building and what we're doing. But I think at the end of the day, if we get the right general contractor will be fine. But we're going to have to kind of watch and monitor closely. You know, maybe have some worded, some, you know, verbiage in there stating that we have the final say on their subs. Because if we see a sub here that they want, that we might have had a relationship with them past and think, well, I'm not sure if that sub has the qualifications for what we want. Especially when it comes to that historical woodwork. That's my thought.
Uh, and a month and a half out, I think about is that I've been asked to, uh, give an update to the other historical preservation group in, in town. Uh, I gave one to the county one of, about three weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to want one, it's about a month out and if you've got some updates and some things that I can take on those two projects would be helpful.
Okay. Alright. At this point, I don't really have anything on the historical portion of it, other than I think we've gone to pretty good lengths to make sure we have the money in there to protect the integrity of all that.
Yeah, that's, that's what it'll be, is that they'll, they'll want some reassurance.
Right.
And I think that this group will be a little more demanding than the other group, you know. I, they, I really just had, uh, I didn't have any questions that, that uh, I thought that there was anything that was, uh, where they were really concerned.
Yeah.
They were, uh, what I gave them, they were comfortable with and, uh, this, the other group may be a little bit more, more demanding, I don't know.
Alright.
Well, we do have to just be honest with them. We're going to do what we can.
Oh, sure.
But things happen.
Exactly, yeah. And that's what, that's what I want to be is, and the more information I have, the better, the better I can assure them that, uh, things will, things are going to work out.
I'll do a little more legwork on my end. I'll reach back out to my contact in Sioux Falls and ask them what case mill, organism, company, whatever that they're using.
Yeah.
Because he said, yeah, they've been involved in some restoration projects before. You know, that's going to be important is that, does that general have that experience in that area? I mean.
Correct.
They're all going to have experience in pulling wires and replacing walls and.
Right.
That's the gravy.
That's, that's, uh, that's part of what, uh, you know, we asked, you know, if we have somebody that we think that will be.
Right.
The ones that are doing it, that I can at least give them a name.
If I could handpick, I know who I would choose.
Okay.
But, and then I had a contractor stop and talk to me, uh, last Thursday or Friday when I was moving snow and had a good conversation with him. And his suggestion was do this project in the wintertime. Which makes sense because you're going to have a bigger pool to select from. Hopefully there'll be more generals eyeballing that project to get them through those winter months as an inside project, so.
On both projects too, we'll have to kind of keep in mind, you know, what the, uh, funding sources end date is, you know, that we, we don't end up, uh, running out the backend of, of, uh, grant grant, uh, uh, construction end dates and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Just keep it in mind.
I'll check into that.
Yeah.
So you're saying there might be a lot of time that the money has to be.
It's got to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four, I think, for the third store one, third story work.
Okay.
Is, uh, that's my recollection and, uh, how about our money sources for the HVAC carry, any?
No, um, there's no, no time limit on that.
Yeah.
So that kind of limits our time right there, so we can't really do it over that winter timeframe if we have to have it by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four spent.
Yeah.
So we're going to be looking at, you know, July, August, somewhere in there.
Yeah, just check on that. I think it was twenty twenty-four, ended twenty twenty-four, but I may be wrong.
Okay.
That's just my recollection.
Okay. I'll reach out to Judge Byrne and find out what that is. Okay. They have anything else? I do have one other thing, sorry. Thought it was something else. February twentieth, we had the carpets cleaned at the courthouse. I don't know if anybody's meant the third floor or not, but we had a failure in the courtroom and in the jury room. It all, it's like this, it's squares, it all curled up. So I taped it all down with extra white gorilla tape. It looks nasty, but nobody's tripping. Um, I'm working with the installer who's working with uh, the representatives that manufactured the product and they're supposed to be coming up and looking at it. See if it's a product failure or what it might be. Uh, they don't feel, they don't feel it was the glue. So they're bringing it, they're going to bring in this rep. Um, so. Judge Byrne and I were talking the other day. You know, if we're doing this pro, project up there on third floor in the courtroom, obviously that, all that flooring was coming out and going to get redone. Well, we'll just leave it late, we just leave this lay until then, you know, but I'm kind of wondering if, how far out we are on this project? If that's really the thing to do, you know? The tape's holding for now, or if it starts letting go and people start tripping over tape, et cetera, et cetera. Are we better off? Okay, we got to replace it, let's replace it in order, so much overstocked to to do the areas that are being tore up, let's say, to move things around up there. That's just one of my thoughts. I mean, it doesn't, it's not very aesthetically pleasing to the eyes for, there's like a large checkerboard. So just making you aware what's going on up there is, and it's the same in the jury's room too. It all popped in there, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you. Right, right. So we've got a materials bid opening. Um, and we got lots of, lots of bids.
It's not nine thirty yet.
Oh, we have to wait for another one. Right. We'll wait though.
But we've got.
Yeah, just so you know, when we do this for the new people, we open them today, might take them back to the office, we go through them, I give you a report the next meeting on who we award the bids to, so.
Alright.
Just so you know.
Right.
But we can do the surplus stuff.
Yeah.
So every year we have to surplus our old iron bridge, iron, whatever, cutting edges, signs and, uh, bridge plank, so. Just looking for, okay for that. I'll get, I'll get an iron quote they didn't get back to me before this morning, so. Iron and aluminum, but we usually end up dealing with Yankton, they're the only ones that want to give us a bid, so they're pretty competitive to everybody else, so. But before I can sell that extra, we got a surplus, so.
I'm going to declare a surplus.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second to declare iron, aluminum signs and bridge plank surplus. On any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And it's nine thirty.
Yep.
So here's a bid on asphalt concrete from Barkley Asphalt. That's, uh, these seven dollars, British asphalt, right?
You repeat that.
Per ton, eighty-seven dollars per ton.
Look one.
Look one of them.
Yeah, about fifteen sixteen bucks.
This one's from Brock White Construction Materials. And this is for, let's see. Their Road Saver two twenty one multiple package seventy three cents. Per. Can't read it. Pound, okay. And then boxed. Sixty nine cents per pound. Mastic one leveling basket mastic multiple. Package sixty four cents per pound. Boxed sixty cents per pound. And then they also bid on Leximat. Four seventy five per square foot. And we have Knife River for mixed bid. See, D two asphalt twenty percent RAP. Eighty six dollars a ton. And same thing for D one asphalt eighty six dollars a ton. G two asphalt eighty dollars a ton and G one asphalt eighty dollars a ton. Bid for road sealants and mastic sealants from Brock White.
Didn't you just knew that one?
Uh, no, you didn't. Like there was somebody else.
No, the one before that I thought with Brock White.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, this is the second bid for a different.
Different product?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the other one was on asphalt.
Yeah, the other one was asphalt. This one's road sealant and mastic sealants. But it's also Brock White, same thing, stationery.
Ran off the crack ceiling and the mastic.
Was that the Knife River one? No.
No, the Knife River one was the one I just.
And the one, go ahead.
Just make sure they get back in the envelopes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this one is. Broad's white. And slash white cap on the inside. And it's Road Saver two twenty one, no box, seventy three cents. A pound and mastic one leveling mastic, no box, sixty four. Then we got a couple from True. True North. The first one is the blade bid.
These other ones back in the right envelope.
Sure. Yeah, they're all in order. Okay, this is True North Steel. A, I don't have it pronounced this, Rusiris.
My Shatterer.
Cyrus Greater Blades. And hardened curve double double. Five eighths of an inch by eight inches by six foot seven or eight inches. Twenty five dollars and forty cents per foot. Three quarters of an inch by eight inches by six foot seven or eight foot. For double double doubled, twenty six dollars and forty six cents per foot. Three quarter inch by eight foot by five foot six flat snow plow blades. Twenty four dollars and ninety seven cents per foot. Three quarter inch by six inch by three foot or four foot carbide inserts. Seventy three dollars and twenty eight cents per foot. And three quarter inch by six inch by three foot or four foot carbide plus. That would be a hundred thirteen dollars and two cents per foot. Same company, True North Steel, they have a second bid. And this one is for concrete block erosion control pad. Leximat high performance turf reinforcements. Four dollars and sixty five cents per square foot. And then full truckload. Is forty eight hundred square feet. Rolls in stock. Eight and sixteen foot widths and thirty foot lengths. And then I don't know, do you need all the detail below or?
Okay, now I'll I'll put that in my report.
All right. And if additional items are needed, twenty foot stainless steel zip ties, a hundred per bag for. Seventy five dollars and eighteen inch steel anchors, five dollars each. Merlin Roy's paving, Sioux Falls. Right, so this is. Heaving G one RAF fifty eight dash twenty eight. Eighty dollars a ton. And G two. Rap fifty eight twenty eight. Is even four dollars a ton. And then a second bid. A copy of the first. First. Just double check. It's exactly the same. When it's removed, state equipment and supply.
You say mid-state?
Mid-state, yeah. Right, this is a proposal for road sealant and rubberized mastic sealants. Road Saver two twenty one. Sixty nine. Point six nine two cents per pound in a zip box. And seventy two point six cents per pound for polyskin. And then for mastic, mastic one leveling mastic. That would be Maxwell cap mastic modified number two oh one and sixty four cents per pound. Gives you a specification sheet for those. These are from Rinker. Two extra well sealed.
Used to be for tear.
Anything from True North on pipe?
Well, that usually comes out in packets. You know, Beetal County's thing, we.
Just go off there.
Have we. Received anything from Beetal County in the.
Nothing.
Not to get in contact. So I'm surprised they've been to Bleach, but they're usually in that packet. Haven't heard any difference that they're not doing it like we have been.
Hope to find out before we approve it then.
Yeah, I'll find out when I get back to the shop.
And then no crane work?
That should be. It was put in there for. She hasn't got to it yet, I don't.
I think she's on the last bit, on the last bid.
This is the last bid from Rinker.
Holloway didn't bid.
And this one's really extensive.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you don't need to read it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Maybe the first line for the, and there. In that clip, there's gonna be five copies.
Yep.
Of the same thing, so. You can just read the first.
Six. Seven.
Pick one off the top line.
Yeah.
Then I'll.
So this is reinforced concrete pipe. And. The twelve inch CL five. The pipe is twenty one dollars and one cents and section five hundred eighty eight. And eighty one cents. And then no bid for arch pipe. And. Don't know how many of these.
No, that's that's good enough.
Okay, and then it looks like, all right, I'm gonna make sure that they're all reinforced concrete pipes. Is there a seven of them? Yep, they're all, they're all exactly the same.
Then other envelope should have like box colors. For asphalt. We usually buy most of asphalt.
This is also from Rinker. And it's pre-stress concrete bulb T bridge deck units. Rapid City plant. Sure that they're like that, same. So. Let's see, pre-stress concrete bulb T bridge deck units. For forty foot. It's thirty eight thousand eight hundred pounds and each are ten thousand eight hundred sixty four dollars per. Extension span, it's like six, six feet.
Yeah, per span.
Six span.
Per span.
Per span.
Yeah. Is concrete materials, are they LG Everest now? Did they get bought out?
Uh, no, LG Everest bought out Merlin Roy's. They got bought out by.
Which we got a bid from Merlin Roy's.
Yeah, they still called asphalt plant for five years, same with concrete materials, but.
Knife River?
Yeah, Knife River bought concrete materials.
Yeah.
So I'll look, maybe there's a Sioux Falls plant. In there, that's why I forgot.
Yeah.
Quality in the industry is never good for getting.
Consistency, a lot of times they'll retain the old name for a while.
Yeah, they were supposed to. Concrete materials, they were supposed to, and so was. Hickman or all of that LG Everest took over, Merlin Roy's. They were all. Keep the name for like three to five years. That was part of the. Deal, why? I don't know, but.
Yeah, the Hickman deal sold enough. I think it's all, I think there's no Hickman labeling left anymore.
Now, I'll go through them and make your report, but yeah, she's nothing.
There you go.
Maybe there's. They're so busy, they're a couple years old. Maybe they decided they weren't bidding, I don't know, find out.
They're gonna call them, yeah.
Why she putting them away? I got one other thing.
All right, Brad.
The guy that's. I told you about. Was getting a ticket. He decided. He doesn't wanna hang around, so he turned in his. Two weeks and only five Friday, so he'll be done on twenty fourth. So right now I'm looking for three people. Over at. After I come and give a whole big spiel. Why we should keep the guy and he turned down manualling. This is, we're never know.
Oh, that's no rad.
Nah, yeah. He's hanging around till the end of the month, so.
Right.
He's getting in on a couple of.
About trial by fire, that was trial by ice.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Anything else for us?
Not for me, you have any questions or. And like I said, I'll go through. All these bids and compare them and give you a sheet. For my recommendations.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
All right.
Yeah, two weeks. You wanna, you wanna hang around for a second, though?
Okay.
For the soil boring one.
Okay.
Oh, okay, we can do soil boring.
Okay. So we've got. Those two quotes, everybody saw, one was from Core, one's from Geotech. The outfits we're working with, they. Everybody knows Geotech. Nobody, nobody knows anything about Core and they were. They were hoping we could go with Geotech.
I think we can. There's a different, little slight difference between the two, you know. Core ended up with a lot more boilerplate in theirs. Geotech, one specific thing that I noticed is that they're. They said that they would do do a standard penetration tests, which are. You drive, drive the sample. And they also had as an option, which is better for our site, I think, is Shelby tube sampling. That was not mentioned in Core. So I think that would be enough justification to go with the higher bid from Geotech. And I noticed that that was. That Tegra put the stamp on Geotech.
Yep.
We accept Geotech's bid for soil boring in a second.
It was a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And just for your information, that's what who I use. For all our road test bores.
Right, and that's what the city used and.
Yeah.
So I I've had. Excellent. I I'd never heard of the other company, I guess.
No, they might be good too. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, they they could be.
People test them first.
But yeah, there's, yeah, we got a lot of previous experience with Geotech here in town too. I I know their company pretty well. And and I do think that for our. Purposes that having the Shelby tube. Style testing is is better for what we're going to be looking for. And I've done. Hundreds of both, so I kind of know what we're talking about.
So how how deep are they going on that?
Twenty one. Twenty one feet. Six feet under the pavement and twenty one under the building and those are, you know. If I were the guy that was doing it, I'd probably go to twenty eight under the building and and. Do one more under the pavements, but. They've they've got history to work with. So I'm.
Yeah, cuz I think they're the same ones who did Polaris.
Yeah.
Right across the street, so.
I complained already here about three weeks ago to. Jose about how I. I I think that the city doesn't do enough. Work and enough compaction work on their streets. That's one of the reasons that we have a lot of concrete breakage. It the. You don't gain strength by the concrete necessarily. You do it by by making sure you have a good sub base. Of course, you know that.
I can prove it too.
Yeah, me too.
Right, any further discussion? You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. You've got a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, the bid goes.
So with that, Rod, when they come to do the borings, if there's snow in that field, can we get a maintainer or payloader in there to clear their path?
You're, you know, you're talking west side of.
Stanford, across from Polaris.
Yeah.
There's that field, or field approach right off Stanford there, is the north end of the building.
Yeah, we, if there's somebody out there to just show us.
Yeah.
What needs to be done, why, as long as it ain't real muddy or something, you know? Or we can get it to move.
They'll stake out the location of the soil borings first, and we just make it so they can get to those and an area fifty feet around it.
I might, I might know the guy that's coming down, never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, just asking, because they were gonna charge more if they have to use the four-wheel-drive equipment to get out there.
Okay.
So I thought if we could plow it, it'd save us some money.
Well, if we knew it was coming ahead of time. Are they got any timelines, I mean?
They're hoping in the next couple of weeks.
Uh?
They're hoping in the next couple of weeks.
I'll go look at it. Because if it happened to be cold um, one morning, we could just, I guess I, I'm, I'm not familiar where the building is going, but we could take quite.
If you took that driveway that's right across from Polaris into that field, it's a square, pretty much a square seven acres. That, that driveway is the north side of, that's the street.
Because I was thinking if it was cold, it'd be better time to get in there before they even get there.
But the way it snows every other day.
You know.
Yeah.
Like, we're out trying the wing yesterday till noon, and then the roads, the gravel roads top started getting slimy.
Yep.
So, but yeah, we can, we can get it out there. Take care of that, that should be no problem.
So I'll let, Lynn is our person with J L G, the architects, she'll let Geotech know, and then I'll just have them call you.
Okay.
They have my number, but I think since they know you, it'll be, be just as simple to have them contact you.
We can sure handle that, that should be no problem. Any other stuff out there too? You know, instead of hiring somebody, I don't know what all entails on getting it prepped, but you know.
Well, that's gonna be the thing, when we start doing dirt work, that construction company's gonna.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you know, if you gotta get some other stuff moved down there, hold out, I don't know what's out there.
Nothing.
It's just cornstalks.
Yeah.
I drive by and, but okay. I noticed the city was out surveying, or had somebody out.
Also Banner was probably putting stakes in for our, for our seven acres. They were gonna go out and, probably laying out the street too, I'll bet.
Is there a, on the county website, is there a architect's rendition, or what is it gonna look like?
Not yet.
I am.
Anything else?
You said you're going into ditch board, was that anything?
We just gotta do the CDs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Red.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I would enter the motion to go into ditch board.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, right?
We're in ditch board, um, at the annual meeting. Two laterals decided to put some money into a C D. And they had agreed to a six-month, but the best rates are at a seven-month. So we've got, uh, the rates that have been bid is First Dakota National Bank at four-point-four-six, First Premier Bank at four-point-two-six, Core Trust at four-point-oh-five, and First Bank and Trust at three-point-two-five. So it looks like First Dakota at four-point-four-six, a seven-month C D, which will work with the timeframe if we do happen to get something bid out. I'd move to accept First Dakota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Entertained a motion to come out?
Move to come out of ditch board.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes, we're in regular session.
All right, and, uh, vouchers, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see them, because they came in this morning, so we might just wanna take a few minutes to make sure everybody has a chance to take a look at them.
I'll move to approve the vouchers when everybody's done.
Second.
Anybody need more time? You good? Need discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. Um, and so now we need a motion to go into executive session for contracts.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, is there any other business to come before us today?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.